All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome, everybody, to the, let's see, May 5th, 2025 workshop for the Greenville City Council. Mayor PJ Conley will be presiding over the council meeting today. Council workshop today. First, I'll call the city clerk for the real call.
Okay, Mayor Conley.
Here.
Mayor Proton Daniels, because let us know she will not be attending this evening. Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn. Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Mayor Conley, have a form.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, any recommended changes on the agenda?
I have no changes, but the city attorney does.
Should we skip over him?
Yeah, it's kind of rough.
Hey, it's never a good thing to skip over the attorney.
That's right.
Never.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I request that council consider adding a closed session motion to be read at the end of the meeting right before adjournment.
All right.
So moved.
All right, most have been made by Councilmember Willis and by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes 5-0.
Let's move on to new business. Presentation of the new Emerald Express trolley.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, presentation on the new Emerald Express trolley. I will now call for our Director of Public Works, Kevin Mulligan, for the presentation.
All right, thank you very much. So a little update on our existing Emerald Express trolley. Hey, look, I want to say our fleet division is amazing, right? But our trolleys are 20-plus years old. Getting parts for them, very, very challenging. So, and over the last year, certainly happened some breakdowns. Breakdowns that have actually prevented us from using it during our scheduled events. We've had to use backup vehicles. But primarily, the use is the monthly art walk tour. There are other requested tours, and I think there'd be even more requested tours with a more reliable vehicle. So tour assignment has been limited as a result of that vehicle. So picture of our, our existing trolley. All right, due to expenses and continued maintenance issue, we are recommending decommissioning of the existing trolleys. So again, the primary users, the city, Andrew CVB, Holly with Arts Council, have met and discussed options for continued trolley service. We've outlined a framework, which I want to just present to you tonight, to purchase a new trolley, and that would be based on a three-way cost share system. And all costs associated with any upfitting would be covered by the Arts Council. All right, we've reached out to a vendor that's on a contract service that we use, Houston Galveston Area Council. That vendor is specialty vehicles, or trolley manufacturer out of Nevada. So they're on the Houston-Galveston Area Council contract, so that meets our procurement process.
They're Houston-Galveston, they're out of where?
Out of Texas. Well...
I thought you said somewhere else. I was like...
This contract's out of, out of Texas, and that vendor...
Okay, okay. I put the two together, I was like, oh my gosh, that's a weird name.
So here is the cost of the new vehicle. New trolley, base price is about $250,000, just short of that. Right? Based on that Houston-Galveston pricing. The improvements and upgrades were requested by the Arts Council. A upgraded radio PA system, interior lighting, as well as a custom exterior wrap, approaching about $20,000. Here is a preview of that Emerald Express wrap. Have a consultant work on that when this was a transit vehicle. Oops.
I got something else.
All right, so the total purchase cost and, and the breakdown of the, the cost share, which is what we're recommending, right? The base price of $246, split three ways, $82, $82, $82. The, the additions, approximately $20,000. So about $102,000 for the Arts Council. Maintenance costs, the fuel and general maintenance, we'll look to build that into the hourly charge. Hourly charge, $250 per hour for fiscal year '26. And then recommendation, city staff to move forward preparing an agreement. Obviously, we'll work with the city, uh, city attorney's office. For the purchase of the trolley in partnership with CVB and, and the Arts Council, upon approval of that agreement, we would bring that, that agreement to council. Between the three parties, the city will purchase a new trolley and surplus the existing three trolleys.
And Mayor and Council say that we...
We presented this to council probably about six months ago, and at that point in time, we were about the $80,000-plus short. And we had challenged the, the, the Arts Council that emerged to, to raise the additional funding to be able to make this purchase. And I'll be darned if Holly didn't do a great job of going out there and, and hitting the... Now, Holly, could you just stand up and just roll off the, the contributors to this project?
Yes. And it really takes a lot of partners. And as a nonprofit, you know, we really try so hard for our budget to go to programming. This is an essential program for our downtown business district and our community for quality of life, but also economic development. And because of that piece with economic development, our partners that came in and with a significant amount is the Smith Family Foundation. I mean, Eddie Smith has done so much and continues to do it that for our community. GUC came in, and also the Greenville EMC Alliance, as well as multiple partners that came already in with our previous funding. So please thank those entities.
County, Pittsburgh County.
Yes, Pitt County. Actually, last year, ECU Health also came in. So we have a significant partnership, and this really shows that the community is engaged and wants this.
So it's just important to me that, to be able to say to the council, when you see that it's broken down between the city, the CVB, and the Arts Council, it's much, many, much more partners than just the three of us that are coming together to make this kind of fruition. And Kevin's done a great job of scoping this out, and we do believe that it will get a significant amount of additional use with all the activities that we have in the downtown area, from Towneville back over to Dickinson, and with all the new streetscape and lighting and things like that. This will be a, a great addition to our community.
Will this run all the time or just on the first Fridays?
At this point, our goal is to keep it on first Fridays, other tours, and then, you know, hopefully, we can see additional programming. You know, when we did the pilot, it was three days a week, three evenings a week.
It would generally run according to schedule?
It, it is... It would not be a part of transit operation.
Okay, I think that was kind of my question. So yeah, thank you. If it was going to be kind of in rotation. And also, not on the agenda, but some of the tours I've done in the trolley have been so awesome, like the American Music Tour, some of the other tours. So maybe, once we get this trolley, we can plan more schedules, maybe even regular the schedule. I don't know.
Absolutely. And there's so many programming, you know, community. I know we talked about really engaging our youth and doing community arts programming or, or historic tours, all different things. Love that.
And I don't want us to get out in front of things, but I, I also don't want us to sell ourselves short. But I do believe there's a lot of opportunity to utilize the trolley on weekends and to move people from event to event in the downtown area. So our first goal should be to, to get the, the trolley into operation, use it for the existing events that we currently have planned for use, and then look at other ways we can expand. I do believe that the public, there'll be a lot of outreach from the public to be able to rent this for their own special occasions. And not trying, and not tying it to the Transit Department under the 80/20 rule we have in the federal government for purchase of capital. This allows us to have full flexibility of how we utilize it.
And I miss this part, but who is going to outfit it with the lights and the undercarriage lights and everything? I guess you got a custom body shop that'll be doing that?
Okay.
We, we do have that, and I don't have that.
The name of that manufacturer?
Are we doing that?
No.
We provide that service? I do know. Do we also do the modified muffler?
So specialty vendors can do some of that, right? They, they do a custom-built trolley. They can probably do the speakers, they can do the paint on it. So they may be able to do all of it.
Thank you.
So with that being said, we'd just like a thumbs up to keep on going. All right. There you go. You said the city's allotment's only going to be coming out of the, the pay of the District 3 representative, right? You might have missed that one.
Yeah, I got this piggy-banked out. We'll get there. It won't take about a minute. I got this piggy-banked just for the trolley.
It's, it's an equal opportunity allocation.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly. Thank you, Ader.
So moving forward, item number two, discussion regarding your quest to delay demolition of the Jacob W. Higgs House, a historic landmark located at 1,112 Dickinson Avenue. We have multiple people that are going to engage in this presentation, but we're going to start off with our code enforcement supervisor, Sylvia Brown, to start things off.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is an item, as we all know, is a discussion regarding the request to delay the demolition of the Jacob W. Higgs House at 1112 Dickinson Avenue. And this property is designated as a local historic landmark for the city of Greenville. And because the owners are deceased, Mr. James Brown Senior and Reverend Arizona Hartsfield, the property is currently being looked after by heirs. His heirs, Mr. James Brown Junior and Mr. Daryl Hartsfield. And staff has had limited contact with them. On June the 7th, staff initiated a code enforcement case. And between June of 2023 and January of 2024, the case consisted of multiple hearings, execution of multiple administrative warrants, as well as an ultimate presentation before council requesting demolition of the property. And on January the 11th of 2024, council adopted an ordinance directing the demolition of the property due to its dilapidated condition. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Planner 2 Blake Privet, who will continue.
Good afternoon, everybody. Blake Privet, I'm the staff liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission. So, once the order for demolition was approved due to the local landmark designation, a certificate of appropriateness from Historic Preservation Commission was required. The properties, property owners did not apply for the COA, so city staff was directed to apply for it instead. On March 26th, 2024, the HPC approved the COA and delayed the demolition for up to 365 days. This is allowed by North Carolina General Statutes. At this same meeting, Maggie Greve, who's the Eastern Regional Director of Preservation North Carolina, notified the commission that a contract with the property owners to sell the property had been put in place.
If I may ask, what was the certificate of appropriateness? Why, why was that required?
So because it's a local landmark, any change to the property has to have a certificate of appropriateness. The demolition is considered a change.
Okay, yeah, okay. Yes, that is a change. Maybe there was some, some in-between stage that... Thank you.
And I just have a, a few slides of pictures that I'm going to run through quickly. So bringing it up to the current status. On June 24th, 2025, it's a little over a month, the 365-day delay of demolition will expire. The dilapidated conditions of the property remain. There have not been any improvements. On March 25th, 2025, the HPC adopted a resolution requesting that council delay the ordinance for demolition in order to allow Preservation North Carolina to continue to market and hopefully sell the property. On April 2nd, 2025, Preservation North Carolina informed city staff that the Higgs House was under contract. I'd also like to point out that there were two letters from Preservation North Carolina in your packet for this meeting, giving a status update at two different points about the property. And at this time, I'd like to bring Andrew Moorhead, who's the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, forward to discuss their resolution.
Thanks, Blake. I didn't know there was going to be PowerPoints. So, good afternoon, all. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. The Historic Preservation Commission was charged with a number of things, but they all come back to the goal of preserving and promoting our city and our history. I'm often struck, as I go through the downtown, how much things have changed since I first came to Greenville 35 years ago, and how much has changed since I came back permanently in 2003. Success of the super block, for some of those have been around for a while, and a lot of the other efforts in the SOT improvement grant in, in the downtown are great illustrations of the value of those efforts of adding and enriching to the feel of our, of our city and the value of historic preservation. Just briefly, when you're considering historic landmark status, the two primary considerations are architectural significance and association of the property with either people or events of significance that are in Greenville. And the Higgs House met both those criteria, which is why it was designated a historic landmark. It's a Queen Anne Colonial Revival architectural style, was built between 1903 and 1905. Is one of the fewer meaning intact examples of this style in Greenville. Couple others you're probably familiar with are the Moy and Fickland Houses. And it has this, I know the pictures flew by. We were told three to five minutes. Another pair that you're familiar, sorry, elaborate double stairs, and it's got a beautiful tin ceiling that's still intact, even though it's hard to tell from the, from the way it's run down. It also meets a second criteria due to its association with Jacob W. Higgs, a local businessman whose notable ventures included clothing store, general and grocery business, furniture store, textile mill, three banks, and the development of the Higgs neighborhood. As was previously mentioned, the Jacob W. Higgs House has been designated as a local historic landmark. The city absolutely acted appropriately due to the condition of the Higgs House at the time by ordering its demolition. Due to the significance of the house and the Jacob, and Jacob Higgs to the history of Greenville, the Historic Preservation Commission delayed that certificate of appropriateness for the maximum of one year that was allowed. And now we're coming back in hopes of giving additional time, which is, of course, at your discretion, to allow the house to be purchased and hopefully brought up to a level that we can continue the work. This, of course, is an enormously complex task, because, you know, financing any of that kind of stuff is much more difficult with a place that is in, in this condition. Preservation North Carolina has done excellent work. As you heard, it sounds like they have a buyer. So we're really just asking to give that, that group and the buyer time to, to make some needed upgrades to get it out of the point that it requires demolition. So, that's it.
So did the HPC buy it from the original owner's heirs?
No, so in fact...
Because that's what I understood in the presentation. Did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, HPC doesn't have a property.
Yeah, so the HPC's only role in this, and, and, and Councilwoman Blackburn got to this, is that before any change can be made to historic landmark, there has to be a certificate of appropriateness for that change. We actually can't say no to a demolition. We can delay it long, you know, for up to a maximum of one year under the statutes of North Carolina to allow this kind of work to happen, to try to preserve this, this historic piece of property.
So there was no contract between HPC and the owners? Is there a signed contract now between the owners and somebody else? If you don't mind, the quick answer, my understanding is yes. But, uh, and let me try to bring this to a close. I know we've had several come up here and speak. We're giving you a lot of history information, bringing you up to date. And with that, we're now looking to you, the council, for our next steps in this. One, proceed as we have been, and in order to demolish, as was mentioned, the 365-day delay will be June 24th. No other action will be required. Our second thing, item, we could amend or modify the current order that you have to demolish and extend, or any deadline, or, or add more conditions. However, that would require a new public hearing. And finally, you could repeal the order of demolition. And of course, yes, a new public hearing will be required to reverse the original order. So with all that said, we are collectively here to now answer those questions.
Yeah.
Before we begin our discussion, I want to let, I've let most of you know already, but let everyone know that my wife and I and Catherine Ross, our business partner, are the people that made an offer on the home. We hope to renovate it as historically appropriate as we can to bring it back to its beautiful, perfect state so that we can operate and in an event space there and just create a gathering space for the city of Greenville and save this beautiful home and save the really important history to our town. And so with that, I'm going to excuse myself from the rest of this conversation as appropriate. And I'm now sitting here as a member of the public, so I'm available for questions as...
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I would recommend a motion to excuse.
They're going to make a motion to excuse or re-keep.
I'll make a mo, I'll make that motion.
Second.
See, mount sideline like that.
All right. Motion to make by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes 5-0.
Hey, no more talking for you.
He's tall. He just can't, under sort of an emoluments kind of situation, he can't financially enrich himself. I have a couple of questions. First of all, so happy. It's not a question, but just absolutely delighted. It looks like there is a contract? Is it under contract? Yes.
That is what we understand, yes.
So that is fantastic news. Likewise, that's fantastic news. We, we are trying to close on Friday. Nice, okay. So...
The pressure.
So just a couple of nuts logistical questions. What happens to the code case? Because this is going to take a minute to get, uh, to get fixed up. What happens to the code cases while this is under, in process? I mean, I don't know if it takes one month, one year, five years, but under, you know, during that time, what happens to the, the code case?
Well, because it would be an order coming from the council, we would have to postpone and delay that case. You know, once it becomes where it's not in a dilapidated state and as they continue to make the repairs, we would close the case.
So it's not like you've got 35 days and five hours to get this fixed?
I think that would be a group conversation between not only code, building inspections, planning, zoning, HPC, to, to kind of... What, what, what's the design? They've got to meet certain standards. It's got to be approved. It's got to get through another process. So we understand already from our point, there, there, it's going to be an extended amount of time. What that time is, we have no idea yet. But the council put a demolition order out there, so we are here to present to you to try to get this handled since, this since there was an order deemed under council's directive.
I'd be in favor of repealing the order of demolition altogether. That would be my preference at this point.
May I have a legal question?
Yes.
How many extensions of the order of demolition can we enter into?
I don't think the statute prohibits a certain number.
So what we could do is, the property closes on Friday, or let's say it's a delay every couple of weeks. And that's before June 24th. We could come back in, in June, extend this demolition order for 365 days. And then 365 days a year from now in 2026, there's been a really lot of substantial progress. We can extend it again until the project's completed. But if, for whatever reason, once they get in, I'm not trying to jinx your project, but it's something that is, oh, we thought we could do it, we couldn't. We can always come back and do it. So we can extend these orders.
Yes.
I don't want to deal with a demolition order when we've already been through everything to do it, but I'm all for granting it to, to extend a lot of the property, try to be preserved and be efforts being made in that regard. I'm all for that.
Why don't we just repeal it? That way they don't have to sort of...
I don't want to go, I wouldn't want to go through the steps to go through it. Again, this is in place. There's no harm to do anything to extend it for 365 days. And likewise, additional 365 days.
My concern is that you've got someone that's going to dump an extensive amount of money into the house, and then they're at the mercy of who feels that enough progress has been made. That's my only, that's my only concern with it is, is that, and if you have, and heck, let's say we have 365 days, none of us could be up here, right? It could be a whole, it could be a whole other group up here at 365 days. So...
Point my tail.
Yeah, so my, my only concern would be is, you know, I, I agree with you too. The demolition process takes forever to do, but I, I would think that we should probably, in good faith, with the understanding of the buyers, that, hey, they're about to put a bunch of money into this place. The expectation is, is that we want to see it to this point. But I don't think you should strong-arm them and say, hey, you know, we're going to put half a million dollars in this house, and a year later, if we could, or we, we may, or we may not demo the house.
Point my tail, Mayor.
Makes sense.
Yep, that's where I am as well.
So would that be a thumbs up on option two?
Or option three?
Three.
Three.
Option three.
Three.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll bring back, bring that back in public here.
Matt, you got anything to say?
I would just love to say that I'm super excited and happy with the discussion, and we do have a really great team in place. I think you all know about Aaron and my history of hospitality in the city and, and what we've been able to accomplish through the scullery and other business ventures we've had. And Catherine Ross is, is an expert. She's a trained architect and really a wonderful lover of Greenville. Her family has been here for a very long time and loves Greenville, loves history, and have a great heart for the project. And we're really excited about the team that we're, we're putting together.
I'll have a Higler agenda.
Oh, what?
So you're Catherine Ross, Dennis's sister?
I am.
Oh, okay. Now I made a connection.
Okay.
All right. So I just asked Matt.
Higler.
Long ties.
All right.
All right, Mayor. Let's hope that...
That's good.
Well, 30, did we?
No, 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 no. Before you got here, we added something to the agenda. Reducing the salary of the District 3 representative.
I knew how it was going to happen one day. I was going to show up a few minutes late. I did feel that, like, y'all, these thunderstorms, my mother was in the hospital. I have her dog. All my animals were all just very upset by the thunderstorm. I just had to take a few extra minutes to calm everybody down.
You can hear the rest of me.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor and council members, I recommend the council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-31811 for the following reasons: to establish or instruct the public body staff on negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of contracts or proposed contracts for the acquisition of real properties by purchase, option, exchange, or lease, and to consult with an attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege, including but not limited to the public body considering and giving instructions to an attorney concerning the handling or settlement of a claim or judicial action or administrative procedure.
Could you repeat that?
All right, got a motion. Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye. Those saying nay.
Motion passes 5-0.
Here, closed session.